Planning Commission for November 27, 2023. I'll start first here with roll call, please.
Philkins?
Here.
Host?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Bunce?
Here.
Bosher?
Here.
Baumann?
Here.
Fent? And Putvin?
Here.
Thank you.
Next, if I could bother everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I got things out of whack. Sorry, Abigail. No, one says one thing, one says another. Oh, well, don't matter. Okay. We're where we're supposed to be. Anyway, so for this evening, everybody on my commission has reviewed stuff, so I need an approval here for the agenda for November 27, 2023.
Moved to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
Putvin?
Who? Sorry?
Putvin?
Yes.
Bosher?
Bacon.
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Host?
Yes.
Thank you.
Called me last, last time, so it took me by surprise.
Keep weighing your toes.
All right. Okay, also, hopefully everyone got to read the October 23, 2023 minute meetings, meeting minutes, yeah. Motion to approve those, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mayor Bunce.
Baumann?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
And Putvin?
Yes.
Thank you.
And on that, there was a minor typo. It's already been addressed by staff, so. Minor. Well, this evening, we have a public hearing right now coming up here, which is a special land use application filed by Mike Dersham, owner of the building located at 707 North Mitchell Street, former Mancino site to allow for outdoor storage and sales of sheds. I take it Mr. Dersham someplace maybe here, hi there. Having read this, John?
Okay, I'll do a presentation. The subject site of this special land use is 707 North Mitchell Street. The proposed use is not identified in the zoning ordinance as a designated use for special uses in this district. We have had a history when other similar uses of a certain intensity are listed in that special use section that we've allowed those cases to be brought before the planning commission for the planning commission to determine whether they would be acceptable under special use. And the reason for that is you can't identify every possible use that might go into that district. And so we've, we've in the past said that if there's uses of similar intensity that are listed, that we would allow it to be proposed in this district. So that's, that's why it's being proposed to you as a special land use and would have to meet the special land use standards that are contained in the zoning ordinance. This particular request is for the outdoor sales of sheds. The subject property is located at 707 North Mitchell, just south of River Street. The parcel number is 1008600100. This is the site of the former Mancino's restaurant, for those of you that might be more familiar with it, is that address. The site has two access driveways off of Mitchell Street, one which is shared with the Java Coffee business. It also has one driveway off of River Street, which is also shared with the Java business. Earlier in this year, the landscape area at the site was removed. That was done without city approval. No new landscape plan has been submitted. We did schedule a meeting with the applicant to advise of what was needed in the way of landscape or the need to replace that landscaping. When these landscape areas are removed, first of all, they should have city approval because they went in under an approved site plan. And if they're going to be removed and replaced, then, well, normally it would go through the department head review if it wasn't a special land use. In this case, I think it could be considered either by the planning commission, because it is a special land use, or there could be comments made by the department heads as well. The sheds were, that are currently on the property, were also placed with no city approval. And basically, anything physical, any barrier that you put on the site, any structure you put on the site, any way you disrupt traffic or pedestrian movement, all those things require a site plan review by the city. So unfortunately, these things didn't happen in the proper sequence. There is also currently, at least last we knew, a legal action going on between Java and the applicant. And this action involved easement rights regarding the two shared driveways. To my knowledge, there's no legal document identifying what rights each party has to the two shared driveways. And I think that is the challenge of the legal process that they're going through. So that's something that, depending on how that proceeds or, or ends up, could end up affecting the site plan for, for this use. Here is the aerial photo. The, here is the Java business. Drive-through is right through here. Unfortunately, with that type of business, you have people exiting on the far side of the driveway. Usually, that's the part of the driveway that people coming in would use. So you have an out, an in, and an out on their driveway. And then the opening of the driveway starts right about here. So you have a portion of the driveway. It's a very wide driveway and it serves both, both businesses. Again, you have a very wide driveway here. And again, it straddles the property lines. And there are no easement rights recorded. But the driveway sets in motion the fact that people using either business could be using the other's property. This is the area of landscape that was removed. And here is another driveway. It's a fairly generous driveway going from this point to this point. So that's kind, and one of the statements in the application was that the sheds were placed at this location along the north property line. There was a lot of concern about traffic that are going to the drive-through for the coffee business, shooting across here to get in line to go into the coffee business. It's kind of a challenging situation because they have the problem of the people could be coming in here to loop around. People could be coming in here to go into the line. And, or people, if they were cutting through here, could be sweeping out here to get in line. And if, if those cars are coming from different directions, there's no easy way to know who should be, you know, getting in line in what order. The principal building on this site is going from a restaurant use to a retail use. The retail uses will include a vape shop, tuxedo shop, and some other retail. The staff has looked at the floor plans and determined that the retail component of the entire building would require a minimum of 18 parking spaces. The subject of this special land use request is the outdoor sale of sheds in the B3 district. The applicant in this application stated that the placement of the sheds is for the purpose of slowing traffic passing through the parking lot, which I stated earlier. This is the site plan that was submitted. He's proposing the sheds on the north property, property line. Showing a distance setback from the driveway, from the joint driveway. And then the spaces here. He, he's showing some just inside this driveway. However, there could be a conflict with people backing out into the, to a primary entry point. There is room where he's showing this double parking bay to meet the minimum parking requirements of the 18 spaces in here. And later, I have a, a drawing to scale which shows how those 18 spaces could be met. And that doesn't include any of the parking that might be required for other affiliated uses that might be on the site. That would just be for the retail, the full retail store. Here, here, here's the drawing. This is to scale. It shows the 18 spaces could be met. It would have to be slightly adjusted. I didn't adjust for the two handicap spaces. But this bay could easily be out another, you know, 10 or, 10 or so feet to allow for the two handicap by the main door. But this is, this is what the site would look like to meet the parking requirements. And you can see that there is, you can see that there is room in this area. This is probably needed, this pass-through area, because this driveway is to remain open. This driveway is to remain open. You have the shared driveway here. There is room back here as well. I'll show you on the site photos that there used to be not a public alley, but an informal public alley on this block that went from here all the way to the next block. We encouraged that when we took the Cristoil thing and we made a easement on the back of the Cristoil property to have joint easement rights to the property behind them to be able to continue down that alley. That's a broader point that really isn't the subject of this, you know, this public hearing. From a planning perspective, it would be nice if, if the area back here could remain alley. It gives access to multiple businesses, either the ones there now or the ones in the future. And it allows that to happen without people having to go out on the Mitchell Street, which is a highly traveled road. It makes it a little bit more difficult to jump from business to business on this block, but, but that's another issue. Here's the site shot from north to south. It shows the building on the right side. It shows the, the sign. The surprising thing is that whole paved area was the landscape area. They remarkably dumped soil on top of pavement. And it was there, I guess, for years as a landscape area. And nobody, I guess, knew that there was pavement under the landscaped area. But this is an area that would ultimately, whether it's part of this proceeding or the site plan review by the department heads would have to be dealt with at some point. There is a picture of the sheds that are on the site now. I, I think they're placed roughly about three, three feet off the north property line that I was showing you early, earlier. This is the north driveway off of Mitchell. It gives you an idea just how wide open those driveways are and that you could have cars moving from, like I say, you could have cars exiting that drive and exiting, exiting that drive and also entering that drive. You could have three different lanes working through that driveway. This is an area out back. It shows the recurrent dumpster. It shows rocks that were placed out here. Again, I think this was an attempt to keep people on the paved section of the property as cars were allowed to run on and off the edge of the parking lot. It just serves to break up the asphalt at that location. I think their desire is to ultimately have a fenced-in area behind the building, which essentially would close off the alley function, which, again, since there is no definitive plan for a public alley, I think could, could be done. The placement of the stones or the other barriers ultimately should be part of some approved site plan. This kind of gives you the shot through to the next block. You can see the, the Cristoil at the far end. And you can see how people have, you know, since the white barrels were put there to block the through movement on the pavement, that people have created a secondary path on the soil, on the lawn area to continue around, to come onto this site, to continue out to the next road. So there is some need to, as each site gets developed, to sort of straighten this mess out and, you know, create a known pathway that people can or can't use. And it becomes readily available that they can or can't use that, that area. This is soil that was moved on to the site, I believe, to deal with an environmental issue. And the applicants can speak, the applicant can speak to this. My understanding is there's some contamination on the west portion of the site. And that, I think the state requested that additional soil be placed over the contaminated soil. But the applicant can address that situation, but that's why you're seeing that soil at this location. Just to give you some idea of what the area looks like, immediately to the south of the building, you have this retail building. I'm not sure what, what the use is at the current time. But I think the sign in front had a, a commercial use identified, more than likely it is now, or would become one. You have immediately to the north, the Java Coffee business. As I pointed out earlier, that's the shared driveway where you see the, the drive-through, the wide open driveway that is shared there. You do have landscaping in front of this use. Just north of River, across from that street, you have the Wexford Jewelers. They've recently had a lot of difficulty with the culverts that flow onto the parking lot. And that whole thing is starting to give out. That's a problem that I guess is being worked on, on a number of fronts. But no definitive solution has been worked out on that yet. But again, a very pleasant front of the building with, with landscaping. Directly across the street, you have the Speedway gas station. I imagine at one time, the bushes that were planted in front of that were lower and you could see onto the site, which actually would have been a better scenario so that you wouldn't block the view of who's at the pumps or what's going on on the site. It's all, you'll notice too, that it's also the site of one of the gateways into the downtown. The north gateway, those planters where you see that Christmas tree growing out of it. And the multiple poles are where the gateway is for the, for the north entry into the downtown. And then across the street, a little bit further to the south, is the Heitzman Holdship Funeral Home. Again, landscaping on the site. They just installed a new, new sign this past year in front of the building. This is an older picture. I, I think the Cash Advance might be a barber shop now. But I just put it in to show the quality of the building. And, and that's immediately adjacent to the Speedway. Okay. Let's see, I think. Yeah, that was a slide that should have been deleted. That was from a previous presentation. This is the proposed site plan. The scale from the map that was submitted didn't work out exactly unless I misread the numbers. I think he had about a 58 setback to the 58-foot setback here to allow for flow of traffic in and out of the drives. And then I think it was supposed to end here, but when I used the dimension given for the shed area, it extended beyond this point. So that's something that we'll have to, to confirm. But it is possible for the sheds to be in that area, subject to whatever is worked out with the easement agreements. And, and that would be for both this driveway and then also this driveway. You know, at what point can that display area, if it were allowed, go in a westerly direction? The applicant is seeking a special land use to accommodate the outdoor sale of sheds. The placement is proposed along the north property line, which is shared with the Java, Java Coffee business. The dimensions of the shed display area on the application was 16 feet by 75 feet. That drawing that I just shown you was dimensioned at that, at that, at that size. And then, as I mentioned, there's also the legal action, which I don't know if it's still being pursued. After I get done, the applicant maybe can, can comment on whether that's a continuation. But if it is, it could result in some kind of agreement for a definitive easement rights for those driveways. And whatever is decided here would have to take into account that whatever might be approved, if it is approved, would have to be perhaps adjusted or the case come back to this board once we know what the agreed to easement areas might be. But again, it's dependent upon that going forward and some definitive solution coming out of the courts on, on that topic. As I mentioned earlier, the city staff has determined the minimum required 18 parking spaces for the retail store can be met on the site. Of course, legal action would have to be considered. The staff believes if there is a planning commission determination that the proposed use should be approved, that a location to the rear of the site would be a better location from an aesthetic perspective. I know that doesn't deal with the controlling of traffic. We did have a chance to meet with the applicant and the city's traffic engineer. And there are other options to control traffic movement, which could be suitable alternatives to stop the safety, safety condition which the applicant is concerned about. Site plan issues as they relate to this special land use request are under the authority of the planning commission. The site plan will still have to undergo department head site plan review, whether the special land use is granted or denied. For instance, the, the landscape plan will have to be reviewed by that group. But that being said, if you think any of the site plan issues relate directly to your decision to either, you know, to approve this use, then you have the ability to supersede the department head review because you need to see those certain improvements as a condition to you actually approving the use. So your kind of needs would be kind of put first in line. And then secondarily, the department heads might look at other issues that you may not be looking at. So just so that you're aware of that. There are no specific standards in the special land use section. That's mostly because this wasn't specifically identified in the ordinance. The only standards that you have to use in your determination whether to approve this or deny it are the general standards contained in the zoning ordinance. And that would be in section 46-747 for, for special land uses. Staff has outlined our thoughts on this proposed use, meeting the general standards in the staff report. That, that's all contained in the report. Some of the standards are clearly met. However, some of the standards will require a determination by the planning commission. Kind of be your call when, when you read through those. And I can, I can go through them in the staff report in just a minute. But in terms of any action that you might take, any decision the planning commission makes on this application, whether it be for approval or denial, should cite the meeting or the not meeting of the general standards contained in section 46-747 of the zoning ordinance. Any decision to approve the proposed use should include a condition to alter the placement of the sheds to be in compliance with any future court decision. And of course, that'd be related to what might happen with the determination of joint easement rights for the shared driveways. If formal easements are drawn up for these two properties and recorded, any future use should comply with those easements. The planning commission may add a condition that the site plan come back to them for review if a future court action requires the movement of any approved outdoor storage area. If a landscape plan has any bearing on your decision in this case, you can request that the applicant come back with the landscape for approval before this board. If it's not an issue for you, it ultimately would be determined by the department head review that would have to be undergone when that plan is submitted. And with that, I don't know if you want me to read through what I've written in the staff report on the, the standards? Or are you happy just to, to review that on your own or have reviewed it?
I have to.
Okay. I, I guess with that, if the-
Good with it, or you want him to go through those? What do you want?
No.
Good. We're, we're good, Mr. Wallace.
If you wanted to have, if, if you, if an applicant thinks I missed anything or wants to add some detail to, that I might not cover in my report, now would be a good time to do that.
Sounds good. If the applicant would like to come forward and talk to us.
All right, so with the garden out front.
Tell everybody your name, even though I asked who you were.
Hello, own the building, 707 North Mitchell.
Talk to us.
All right, so.
They can hear you too.
All right, so when we bought the building, the garden out front was severely overgrown. And we started trying to take some of the overgrown trees and brush out of there. But since there's asphalt underneath, everything kind of just came out like in one piece. So that, we started ripping that apart because we wanted to fix up the sign. We wanted to fix up the garden out there. But it was so far gone that we just kind of had no choice but to take it all out. We saved all the landscaping blocks. We're going to put those back in, but we had to wire wheel and clean up the sign and paint the sign. So that's why we hadn't gotten that put back in yet. So we just got our signs in a couple of weeks ago. And our plan is to do that, but now we're into winter time. So first thing in the spring, we will be putting it back. I mean, we've done a ton of work on the place. As far as the sheds being there, when we first put them there, I wasn't aware that we had to have a special land use permit. There was also a couple of other things I wasn't aware of moving forward into this. First piece of commercial property I've owned. And I've owned a lot of residential properties, but never anything on Mitchell Street or anything like that. We've had several different stores. You know, we move into a store, never had really any issues before. I didn't know there was certain things you had to do to switch the zoning from a restaurant to retail. I thought commercial property was commercial property. I didn't know there was, you know, that much of a difference. And I didn't know I was supposed to have a permit to tear the garden out. I was just trying to clean the place up, you know, severely overgrown, the blocks were falling all over the place. So we were just, you know, we're just trying to clean the place up. The reason we put the sheds out there so soon is some of the gutters on the building were falling off. And I had a ladder out there. I was standing on an eight-foot ladder and a car came flying in, almost took me right off the ladder, was literally inches away from hitting my ladder. And then they went over, cut across, went to Java, and we started paying more attention. And more and more cars were cutting through and at high rates of speed. And also with the stoplight, when it turns red, people would cut through that first driveway, and then they would shoot out onto River Street and, you know, go take a left onto River Street heading west. So it was just kind of like, we need to do something to slow people down here. Like I said, I didn't know we had to have a special land use permit for the sheds to be there. I didn't think we were putting them any, you know, in any person's, blocking any view or on anybody else's property. We're not trying to overstep any bounds here or anything like that. The rocks that are placed out back were actually in that garden out front, but nobody knew they were there because it was so severely overgrown. Everything had grown over, whoops, grown over top of the garden, of the rocks. But, so we put those back there to get them out of the way for one, and for two, to try and slow people down and keep people from going through the back because where everybody's driving off the edge of the asphalt. We've got broken up asphalt, you know, 10, 15 feet into the parking lot, and I've seen, you know, tanker trucks try to go through there. You know, I've, actually, the pole that's directly behind our building got hit so hard a few weeks ago that they pushed the bottom of the pole this far. You could stick your fingers down in between the pole and the asphalt where the pole was at. I had the fire department, the city police, and Consumers Energy all out there. We've had people out in the back have vandalized our AC. They're like rooftop HVAC units. We've got two of them. The vents on the side, people have like carved their names into the vents, you know, done a bunch of vandalism out in the back, carved their names into, you know, the sides of the building and stuff like that. There was some people out there, 3:00 in the morning, doing dirty things behind our dumpster one night. Just, we've had a lot of issues, you know, in the back, and we're just trying, we want to put a fence in to try and, you know, keep people from getting into doing damage on our property. We've got security cameras out there. We're working on getting some more lighting out there, but, you know, that doesn't really stop anybody from getting in and doing damage. And, you know, I've got my tool trailer parked out there with tools and, you know, our vehicles are parked out there. So it's just, you know, we're just trying to clean the area up and everything like that. We're not trying to cause any problems or anything, so. And the sheds, like I said, we're just trying to sell some sheds and, you know, keep people from cutting through our property, so.
So where's your court thing? Are you gaining on it?
Oh, that, I, so that, I'd never even talked to these Java people before, except for a couple of minutes. She asked if we could meet and talk. I told her, yeah, we could meet and talk sometime. And then all of a sudden, I got a letter in the mail from their attorney at McCurdy and Watilla saying that something about they wanted some property, and if we didn't give it to them, then they were going to make it cost a lot more money for me, and they were going to take it from us based on some old law that if you use a property for 15 years, you can take it from somebody or something along those lines. So we ended up hiring an attorney, but then about two weeks ago, some person, I'm not going to name who it is, came to me at my back door and told me that he was purchasing Java and that they would be taking over here in the next couple of weeks. And actually, today, they closed on that property. And so I have no idea because their attorney would not get back to our attorney based on that lawsuit. So I have no idea what's going on with that right now at this point.
Can I ask a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Laura.
Am I understanding right, because I was trying to look at the court records? Did you ever receive service of an actual lawsuit?
No.
Okay.
No, they just basically threatened one, so I hired a lawyer. But I don't know if they're actually following through because they won't get back to my lawyer.
Yeah, I didn't see any actual lawsuit in the court system.
No, they've just threatened it. Like I said, I've never talked to the people, so I don't, I don't know. I don't know what their problem is with me. I've never done anything to them.
I did have a chance to talk with their attorney, and I think there was a proposal, they said, that was sent to his attorney proposing what they thought would be appropriate easement areas, but I never received a copy of that, and I don't know what it is. So I don't know if that happened or not.
And it's sold today, so I don't know. I've talked with the new owner. Him and I should get along really well. But I don't know as far as if they even have rights for your lawsuit or anything at this point, since they've sold it. But as far as the dirt in the back, along the back section of the property, that used to be a railroad grade. So we had to pay around $16,000 to have the entire property environmentally tested. They drilled holes in the parking lot. There's about 16 monitoring wells out in the parking lot that they pulled groundwater out of. They drilled holes in the cement in the building, I think eight holes in the building, tested for vapors because there used to be a gas station there back before 96, when the building was built. So they tested for all that, and what they came up with was back in the back where the railroad is at had toxins, contaminants like Creosel and a bunch of other stuff. So they told me that basically, per Eagle, we had to put down a layer of topsoil and grass seed and then keep that from getting tore up and disturbed as per our due diligence for BLDI, for them to submit with Eagle. And then we did all that, and we had to take pictures and send them to them people. And then they submitted everything with Eagle, the state of Michigan. So we were just doing what our due diligence was with that as far as with Eagle, so. And I was just trying to make them happy, so.
Your note that you wrote, you confused me a little, Mike.
Yeah, I've been pretty busy the last couple of months. A lot of 20-hour days.
Yeah, that one. Granite Street really confuses me because that's like-
Well, we were, we were in the middle of a purchase of the salon on Granite Street, so we were, it was a time a lot of stuff was going on. We were trying to buy that place too, but that ended up falling through because that needed a special land use permit. We didn't want to keep it a salon. We were wanting to change it, but we were told that it'd have to have special land use permits, so. Didn't mean Granite Street, meant River Street.
Okay. But then, Mike, how did we get there? I'm also a smidgen confused. You were on your ladder where? Maybe at the sign?
The front corner of the building.
Oh.
By the front entrance, the southernly entrance.
Okay.
And people cut through there constantly to go all the way around the back of the parking lot to go into Java. And it just happens all the time. And I'd almost, you know, I was up on the ladder and a guy came flying through.
That would get close to your building? John's looking for it.
That, so that southern entrance right there?
Yeah, yep.
I was standing on a ladder, taking care of the gutters up there, and somebody came flying through, almost took me off the ladder, and then they were going over to Java, and it was just, the speed that the guy was going scared me more than anything because all I could think was little kids running out of my park, or out of my door, and somebody comes flying through 30 mile an hour, and that kid gets hit. Now, I have to live with that. That person has to live with that, you know? And that was my main concern is just the safety of the people because the speed that people cut through there sometimes is, you know, 30 mile an hour probably at least, and especially the ones that are trying to cut the light, you know? And when we put the sheds there, it cut down on that significantly. And I've got cameras out there, so, you know, you can, it shows that it's cut down a lot of the traffic, people cutting through like that.
I've been late for work five times now because of that.
I'm sorry.
Did you get rolled up?
No.
Trying to get fired, John.
Oh, darn, you can only try. Anybody have questions here for Mike? He did a good job explaining stuff.
And this doesn't have a direct impact on the sheds, but who owns the property that is granting the easement? Who would be the grantor of the easement? Do you own both properties, or is it split, as that picture would show, about half and half?
On the which?
That would be on the northeast and the north driveways. Clearly, the driveway to the south by your building you own.
So from what I was told by the previous owners, who, it was the family who originally built Mancino's, they were part of the franchise. They told me that back in the day, they bought Java, and then they bought the railroad grade, and they sold Java that, and they kept part of each of those entrances. And equalizations, I've been there, and the county clerk and they all, they've looked at the stuff, and they said it all looks pretty right on, so. I know the Java people had a surveyor out there, but he hasn't finished. He hasn't been able to really locate anything properly yet. He's been out there several different times. And I've been keeping in contact with him because, like I told him, I said, I'm not trying to overstep bounds. If I need to move my sheds a little bit, let me know where the property lines are at. I'll move them accordingly. We'll figure things out. I'm not trying to be on their property, so. Literally just trying to make some money selling sheds and, you know, slow people down from flying through the parking lot.
Question to John, is that valley, alley vacated?
It never was a formal public alley.
Oh.
It was used as one for some period of time, and we addressed it when Chris Doyle went in, and we thought there would be, from a general stat, planning perspective, good if we could retain it. And that's why we required that alley to have joint easement rights at Chris Doyle. We didn't want that to be the first case of sealing that off. And the main reason is just the heavy traffic on Mitchell Street, and we don't know what the future uses on this block are going to be. And just like how people use the other buildings downtown, like at the clam or anyplace else, you tend to move from block to block, not on Mitchell necessarily. You move from block to block or area to area on the more controlled alley streets. And so that was the purpose for that. You know, it would be a great thing if we could agree on how to do a public alley back there, but if that seems like too, too of a hurdle, then I guess we can not worry about blocking any of the lots once that decision is made.
John, right now, does a property owner such as Mike here have the right to block that?
Yes.
That it is their property?
Yes.
And are there setback requirements then?
There are setback requirements, different setback requirements. One for buildings, one for accessory uses, and actually another one for fences.
John, is it still a railroad right away, or has that been abandoned?
To my knowledge, it's been abandoned, but I could look into that deeper, but I wasn't aware that it was.
The middle, the middle's next to it still.
Yeah. 111 River Street, Fred Mumy owns all that property. He bought all the property from DOT. He even, that old railroad station with the roof that comes out, he even owns half of that, that hangover, so. He bought all that up a couple of years ago. He's trying to expand on that, is what I was told.
Okay. And Mike, your understanding, according to that drawing, the narrow strip, you own up to that?
Correct.
To the west?
Our survey says we own 50 feet from the edge of the asphalt towards the white building.
Okay.
Is what our survey says. And that's the property that I had to level out and cap, is so they called it.
Do you know if the new owner of Java is going to run that as a coffee business?
I'm not sure what his plans are. We met for about probably three minutes, talked. He introduced himself. We said we'd set up a time, sometime to meet and talk and, you know, figure some things out to work together. And he's been out of town for a while, so I haven't really heard back from him yet.
Anybody good with Mike before I open a public hearing? Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So at this time, we will go ahead here and open the public hearing here on the special land use application here for Mike, on the outdoor storage and sales of sheds is what this is about. So at this time, if anyone in our audience is here to speak in favor of this, against this, either or, please come forward and tell us who you are and tell us your problem or no problem. Anyone? Don't be shy, we're easy to along with, but.
Mike thought all these people were here for him.
Yeah.
Do I need to sign?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hi, I'm Dorian Lance. Ashley and Mike, Ashley's my daughter and Mike's my son-in-law, and they're are very ambitious entrepreneurs. And I can truly honestly say the kids did not know about all these things that they needed to do. They just thought they were doing a good thing, you know, fixing up the building, opening the store. They planned to have pickleball paddles, and they have, well, they have those. And then they have the disc golf, and they have skateboards. And those are the things that were really important because they have younger generation coming in, kids coming in to buy skateboards and stuff, and that's what the concern of the traffic was. And I go through Java a lot, sometimes three times a day, and it's like, I've never cut across a parking lot, but I've seen people do it. And they're just trying to, you know, have a business and do good work, so.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you. There's one for you. Well, she spoke in favor of you. That's a good one, that's a good one. Anyone else in the audience either, again, either for this or not? Okay. Seeing or not hearing or all of above, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and we'll chit-chat a second. Members, views. Well, before you do the fence, you might inquire. FYI. Okay.
I would just like to say that I think it's pretty wonderful that you are venturing into commercial property, and I hope that however this all ends up, that this adventure doesn't scare you away from further development and being an important part of making Cadillac better.
With that being said, the only reservation I have is how well that fits in with the character of that area. It's, to me, and I'm not dissing you in any way, Mike, it looks unnatural. Maybe because I've driven by there many, many times, it just, it looks kind of odd to me. It looks out of place. But other than that, I mean, I think it's great to have a new business. I was kind of glad Mancino's went out because I was mad at them all the time. Because they were never open.
Yeah, they weren't.
But no, no, I mean, I applaud you for what you're doing. But to me, it just, it just looks slightly out of character. Is there anything to keep those from creeping closer and closer to Main Street? And I know you have a 58-foot distance written down there, but I also know that as time goes on, those distances seem to change.
I mean, I would, you know, I've been going in closer personally because it would, we got the windows in our building face looking to the heart, you can see right up Mitchell Street, so.
Okay.
How are you? And I suppose the height of our building is when you're standing in there, you can see right up.
Mike, excuse me. Can you come to the front because not everybody can hear you, and Dale might be able to, and I'm even sitting here. My hearing ain't good.
So I'm not, I don't want them to come any further forward because where they're at right now, when you're looking out the north windows of our building, you can see straight up Mitchell Street, and it's a really nice view. The building was placed in an angle, actually, you can see, just so that, that purpose, so, you know, we wouldn't want them to creep up. Plus, I don't want to try and, you know, stop traffic from coming into the building. And it's mostly just, they have them there on a display, and the sheds are actually- And the sheds are actually coming from a different spot. So those aren't really moving much. Unless somebody wanted that specific shed.
My main concern is if they did creep or move, that it's going to become a, a traffic visibility hazard when you're at the corner of River Street, hoping to turn right. And, and it's probably a question you're going to have to deal with, with the traffic people.
Right.
Because they're going to want to know that's not going to happen. At least I would think so.
Right. Well, I told my shed people that we want to keep them behind the back corner of Java. We don't want to go any further than the back corner of Java towards Mitchell Street. Um, and they, uh, they always speak to me before they do anything out there, before they move anything or anything like that. They would talk with me first and I would be.
Are the sheds yours or are they consigned?
They're consigned.
Okay.
And that's your total number of them that are there now?
Yeah, we don't want to put any more out there. That's, that's all we want them. Uh, so like I said, there, those are kind of just a couple of displays of what they have. And then there's brochures in the front one that had, they have hundreds of different, uh, different ones that they've got. So those are kind of just like, uh, hey, these are what we have and this is what we can get you. Uh, but those ones pretty much just stay there unless, like I said, unless somebody specifically wants that one shed, then they would remove that. Put the same one back in its place. But they, there's no plans for them to have any more, any, uh, than what's out there right now. So.
Okay. Thank you.
I can ask Mike a question?
Yes.
So obviously there are two interests. One, well, three, it seems to me. One, slowing traffic that might be crossing to River and to Java. Two, um, selling some sheds and making some money. And then you've got a third one, which is also to my understanding, cutting off the access along the west side of your property as well. Um, so that, um, John, where like the rocks are and whatnot that John talked about?
Oh, those are.
You have people crossing north?
Yeah.
On the west side of your building?
Yeah. Yeah. We've had people cutting through, uh, the grass and everything.
Just, just to ask the question, is there an option to your knowledge where you could move the sheds there, meeting your interest in cutting off people moving north along the west side of your building? And then having another perhaps less shed-like stopping of traffic along the north side of your property? Is that a possibility?
Um, so you're saying put them in the back of the property?
Yeah.
I mean, we could potentially do that.
But I mean, and then secondarily, is there another way to slow to, to meet your traffic issue on the north side of your property? Like a fence or a?
Putting some bins in there, what maybe landscaping stuff or materials? Did you have some of those held back?
Yeah. Well, I've got.
Switch places.
I've got some rocks out back, um, that came out of the garden out front.
Yeah. But no, didn't I see a drawing that you had there where you had some bins in the back?
Uh, so.
Like concrete bins?
So I want to start renting out tools and equipment, uh, out of the back of the building. I've got, I do a lot of construction. I've got, you know, dump trailers, tractors, backhoes, stuff like that. I would like to start renting out. Um, I thought that was going to be part of it too. Um, that's part of the reason I want to put the fence in the back. Um, so that way, you know, I want to have my stuff out there stored that people aren't messing with the equipment and everything too.
I see. Does he need a special use for that too?
Yeah, I would like to know that.
To bring in, to bring in like tractors and such.
Okay.
Would most likely require it, um, to use just the general rental out of the building would be an appropriate retail use.
Mike, question for you. Um, so these are consignment sheds. We're having a discussion here, looking about making a, um, you know, a, a special use, uh, permit here, which would go on any contract, uh, in place with these sheds? Could this disappear tomorrow? You know, we're having a discussion here. Uh, do you have a contract that goes, this is going to be here for, um, you know, a year, two years, day by day?
No, uh, we, we had a handshake. It's an Amish fellow out of, uh, McBane. Uh, we had a handshake on, uh, three, um, quarterly payments. And I, it was basically, uh, hey, if they work here, good. You can keep, you know, keep having them here until it doesn't work out for you and vice versa, you know? Um, after, after we got them there and then I found out about this, I spoke with him and he said, well, if you really need them out of there, just let me know and I can come get them. It's, you know, no harm, no foul. Um, and then we just wouldn't charge him rent for this quarter that we had them there. So to make up for him having to move his sheds and everything. So.
John, question for you then. If this was allowed, if this was passed allowed, does this then remain with this section of property here going forward?
Yes. And, and I mean, you, you could do an approval for the sheds. Or you could, um, you know, any other, well, I guess you'd need to come back if it was one of the other items mentioned in the, in the ordinance for special land use. But yeah, you would, you would want to designate the area and it would stay as for that use. And, you know, I imagine you could change it to something that didn't require any kind of approvals. But you, you know, it would be fixed in place, run with the land forever. So somebody could come back in and, and set it back up if they wanted to.
And that's one of the things that I think we all, that's, as the commission wants to look at is what you put in place today is there. And, and we want to make sure that, uh, going forward, that it's something that we want there, that it's not a one, uh, you know, applicable for this. And so.
Well, and if they were to disappear too, then your traffic control issue would not be any longer addressed.
Not in that form. It would be addressed in a different form.
Yeah. If you made that part of an approval. Yeah. It's a challenging.
Plenty of options for controlling the traffic that are.
Right.
Much more.
Right. There are a number of different ways that could happen.
So in the, Mike, in the short time the sheds have been there, have those been vandalized?
Nope.
Just curious. Okay. So it's just out back?
Yeah. Yeah. Cause on the, if you look on the south side of the property, there's, uh, like a bunch of trees and stuff, bushes that grow along. There's a fence there. And then there's a privacy fence from the front corner, front south corner of the building to the fence on the south line of the building. So it kind of creates like a cubby. And then there's two rooftop HVAC units that are about eight foot by six foot, probably four foot tall, um, that are both under like a little covered roof. Uh, you can see them. They're like little gray squares. Uh, both of those, yep, those right there. Uh, both of those, the condensers have been like, they're, they look like the fins on a window air conditioning unit on the back. And they're like drawing their names in them and stuff like that. Um, there was a table out in the back that has a bunch of curse words carved into it, uh, holes burned into it, uh, broken bottles, uh, a bunch of needles that we picked up from out back there. Uh, the previous owner said he would chase people out of there all the time. But, uh, like I said, where the dumpsters at one night, we chased, uh, older gentleman with a girl who looked to be about 13 maybe, from the one corner of the property, told them they had to leave. We came out around two o'clock in the morning and they were having intercourse underneath of the lids of my dumpster. I told them they had to leave. They said, we're not on your property. And I said, you're right. You're not on my property. So just stay off my property and have a good night. And, and I left. Um, but like I said, we've had the police there multiple times. I've had multiple bikes left, uh, behind the building, just abandoned out there. I've had the police and the, the guy who comes around with the bikes, I think his name was Joe or something. He picked the, the bikes up from out back. Um, just a bunch of weird stuff happens all the time, a bunch of people going around back there. Cause people cut through that property all the time. So they just end up, there's a bunch of broken bottles back behind the dumpster. We already cleaned it up once this year. And there was a bunch of broken bottles out there and stuff. People dig through our garbage all the time. Um, just a bunch of crazy stuff, but.
Looking for old subs?
Something or pop cans. They always ask for pop cans.
Okay. Are we done with Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
In my staff report, I didn't make conclusions on sta- uh, general standards A through D. Uh, I did feel comfortable stating the general standards through E through, um, H were, were met. And I was, standard I was not applicable. So I guess you concur. You'd be trying to decide whether, uh, standards A through D are met in your decision on the proposed use.
Hopefully with activity in the building, it'll help prevent people from being out back. But of course at two in the morning. Uh, yeah.
It's weird.
So. Okay. What's anybody think?
Well, I'm, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
This one's really close and I'm not exactly sure why. I really would love, as the mayor mentioned, to further development downtown. I don't personally care that there are sheds. Um, it does change the look. But recognizing that a B3 also allows at least by special use, house trailers, rental of trailers, secondhand automobiles. I mean, it's zoned, anticipating a similar sort of use, at least in my opinion. And so I'm, I'm struggling to say it doesn't fit, but also you, I feel like the owner wants to fix a traffic problem with something that has a really different look. And I would love to fix the traffic problem, allow him to make money and yet not change the look intensely. And so, but yet when I look through and I see council looking and trying to hope that we use the right words, I look at A through D as the general standards. Uh, it both fits and doesn't fit. And so to me, it's a really close call either way. And I'm, I guess I'm interested in the other thoughts. I could probably be convinced either way. I don't think there's any reason to move the sheds off the site. I think finding a way to help him do both of those things is an appropriate use and I would be supportive of that. Whether it's in that spot is a different question.
I would agree with Joe and, and as I look at this, um, you know, maybe could, could, um, fix two problems by moving the sheds to the west edge of the property. So we, we've got, um, you know, kind of a vacant area there. It's not paved. That, that's the downfall. That's where the more expense comes in. Um, but that's why I asked the question, does the landowner currently have the right to close that off? Close it off. Stop the traffic. Move the sheds to the back. It gets them out of those site, line of sight. And then look at, um, nu- probably numerous alternatives to slow the traffic. Whether it's, um, obviously we know we can grow landscaping on top of concrete. Um, something that would beautify the, the whole site, um, kind of soften some of the, um, uh, asphalt there. Um, whether, you know, fencing, um, decorative fencing probably isn't a real good option because people are going to hit it, break it. But something to slow that and close that back off. Move the sheds back there, utilize that unused space if it is allowed with your Eagle permitting. Um, that might be another issue with filtration of what they made you put in there for topsoil, things like that. But that would be my thought. Um, and then that way, moving forward, if that guideline is set in place and somebody else wants to do it, it, it's there. And it, um, to me probably fits, answers question, um, D, uh, more. Because you have an industrial warehouse, uh, to the backside. And so that's my thoughts.
But what are you doing to his visibility of his sheds?
Not his.
Well. Good point. Mike got to come back up front if you're going to holler at us.
He brought up the industrial building in the back behind us. Um, I'd also like to point out that they have about 50 shipping containers, uh, all out on that property. Um, you know, like the big, uh, 40-foot long shipping containers, they're just stacked all along the fence, uh, heading to the south on their, it would be east property line. Just south of where that picture shows, there's about 50 of them out there in the field area. So the bottom corner, bottom left corner of the pitcher cuts off at the edge of the building. Straight south of there, there's a whole line that runs down about a hundred feet long or maybe even longer. Uh, that's all shipping containers lined up along that fence there. So, um, I mean, it's not really that far away from where we're at, you know? And they've got all those shipping containers there that they're just using for storage, from my understandings. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
John, same zoning even because they're off from Mitchell Street?
They'll do the same zoning, B3.
Moomy's building is B3.
I agree with both of you. Um, my only concern with putting the sheds in the back is it takes away that what Mike has tried to do, um, um, out front. And secondly, people have continued to figure out a way to go north and south back there. And so I think that they would probably continue to find a way around those, around those buildings as you, I mean, as you say.
Not on his property though.
Well, but right, um, behind his property, they would. Yeah. So.
And that alleyway goes.
Yeah.
Quite a, quite a bit. Yeah. Well, yeah, right. It isn't, but it's been, I've seen vehicles.
Yeah. I don't disagree with you.
Yeah. With respect to the building behind, we would have to look at its past use. I think it's been used regardless of the zoning. If it's been used industrially, they have that vested right to continue to use that industrial. I know it's, I'm fairly certain it's been used as warehousing, uh, in the past.
It's just over, I think over time, people have been able to develop some really bad habits with that property. And so it's changing those bad habits because they've been, it's just been allowed. Nothing has stopped them from racing through there. So it's confusing.
Yeah. And John, you were saying that there are other options for limiting that traffic going through there that could also be utilized?
Right. I mean, I think, um, Joe may have mentioned some of them. I mean, you can, you can, there can be, you can use curbing, you could use fencing, you could use landscaping. You know, they all have different cost parameters, um, depending on how substantial a product that you're using. But, you know, there are, there are ways to, to do it, um, with a strong enough visual to, uh, to make it work. And it should make parking and movement from the parking lot into the building safer. If fewer people were using that south drive to, uh, access the, the coffee business. You know, bollards is another thing, you know? They can be sort of ugly or they can be attractive, depending on how you, what kind that you, uh, install. But I, I, in terms of cost, I don't know which is, is easier to do, bollards or fencing or, or landscaping. You'd have to look into that.
Well, Mr. Chair, for the sake of just moving this on, because I know most of these people aren't here for this conversation, but.
We know that.
How?
Thank you.
Um, based upon general standards A through D, um, the ability to get a special land use permit under the B3 district for similar sorts of uses, including house trailers, rental of trailers, secondhand automobiles, et cetera. The secondary interests and value to the business and its surrounding areas, including not fundamentally changing the surrounding area, inappropriately changing the essential character and not interfering with the general enjoyment of the adjacent property. I would make a motion to approve the special land use permit, subject to any future court order that might change the opportunity or ability to use that space for movement of traffic.
And would you be willing to add your concurrence with my determinations on E through I?
Yes.
Okay.
I will take that friendly amendment to my motion.
How's the point?
And to put in here the shrubbery and stuff, yes.
Well, that's, that's an administrative, that's an administrative thing that's now part of a special land use permit.
But do you want him to come back to us?
It can be or it can't be. I mean, if you, if you think the aesthetic of that plan weighs into the aesthetic of the building, then you could ask it to come back here. Or you could let it go to the department head.
My motion would be to make, to. My motion would be to make, to have administrative staff deal with that particular issue. Counsel, is that appropriate?
Yes, if I understand correctly, you're not making landscaping a condition of special land use approval.
Correct.
Okay.
You can do that.
All righty. Ah, do we have a second to that? Oh, I'm sorry, the mayor. See, I'm just dizzing here tonight, you know? Too much turkey, I don't know. Okay.
All right. Rice?
Yeah.
Bowman?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Post?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
And Bosher?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Okay, now that we've entertained you on that, let's see. Run, run while you still can. Unless you really want to stay. Ah, okay, we'll give them a second here. The other reason all the rest of you folks are here, I'm guessing, because I'm sure it's not for the lot split. Anyway, so we're going to talk about amendments to sections 46-372, 46-397, 46-456, and 46-458 of the city zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals. Mr. Wallace?
Yes. At the last, or one of the last city council meetings, a request was made into a motion and which was approved to have city staff prepare amendments to the current city zoning ordinance, which would essentially codify the essence of a memo that I wrote two or three years ago with respect to where short-term rentals could be considered. And that was in the TS one, TS two, B one, and B two zoning districts. And so what you see in front of you is the outline of taking each of the sections of the current ordinance, and all those districts were amended to allow for short-term rentals, just as the memo indicated. And the only other thing that we did was we needed to add a definition of what a short-term rental was. And the short-term rental definition means a furnished residential unit, either an apartment, house, room, or any living space in a house or apartment that owners rent out for periods of less than 30 continuous days in any one month. And the 30 continuous days, less than that amount, is based on the fact that there's probably a lot of people who have coming, or a lot of people coming off year-long leases who are renting month to month, and we obviously don't want to throw them into a short-term rental category. It just didn't seem appropriate. So, other than that, I don't know if you want me to walk through each of the sections, but essentially, we just went, I think in three of those districts, they were to be allowed by right, and then in one of the districts, it was to be allowed by special use permit. So we went into the appropriate section, whether it was by right or by special use permit, and added the term, short-term rentals. So, in my mind, I think what we're proposing is exactly what the memo stated, as close as we could figure it out. And I think the only other thing we did is, out of one of the sections, I think we removed another listed item that was, uses similar to the ones permitted. And that was on the advice of legal counsel that we did that.
Yes, Marcus?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, I just wanted to add, perhaps, a little more context as to the why. Why are we here tonight even talking about this? And as John mentioned in his very opening remarks, it was because city council, one of their prior meetings, probably about a month or so ago, had given staff the direction to codify our community development director's interpretation of the current zoning code as it stands today in regard to this use, something that, again, he had interpreted and published online a few years ago, but yet not something that's codified. All of that conversation was happening at the same time that I think everyone here on the board knows, and perhaps a lot of members of the public also know, the city is going through a complete review and update of our zoning code, something that we're required to do, and something that we're trying to get done in somewhat of a timely manner, especially to be ready to then roll with an update and review accordingly of our master plan as well. The short-term rental piece, which is a very small piece of the overall zoning code, not to anyone's surprise, but certainly became the talk of town, and became something that was preventing us to be able to move forward with a full review and consideration of the zoning code in and of itself. And so a solution, which I think is a smart one, was, okay, let's pause on the whole zoning code, pull out the short-term rental piece, codify our current practice, which is what we're looking at doing as a part of the process tonight. And then, once that piece is codified, move forward with the full presentation of all of the other updates to the zoning code, to the planning commission and the city council. Once that process is done, then we can take sort of a part two or a relook at the sections specific to short-term rentals. And if the planning commission and city council wish to amend that, to look at, look, excuse me, to have that look any different, we can, we can certainly do that then. But it allows, you know, this process would allow us to basically move forward with all of the rest of the business that frankly has been, has been put on hold now. So, that process starts tonight with the public hearing. Following the public hearing, presumably there'll be a recommendation from the planning commission, goes to city council. City council will then set a public hearing themselves, and then following their public hearing, presumably will, will look at considering taking action on what was, what was proposed. Again, what is being proposed is just a simple codification of what's already out there. Hopefully that helps to clarify and provides a little more context. The city attorney here this evening, Laura Genovich, has been very much involved in, in working with the city on this issue.
I have about two sentences, Marcus.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just gonna distill it down.
Please, yeah, go ahead. Even more.
Even more.
Yeah.
The memo we're talking about is the existing practice. When we talk about codifying, we're taking that memo, which is an interpretation, which has force to it, but we are proposing to put that existing practice into the zoning ordinance. What is not before the planning commission in this amendment is what should happen in the future, or where short-term rentals should be allowed as part of that complete zoning overhaul. There will be additional planning commission public hearings on those amendments. So this is not the, where should they be? Should they be here? What should the regulations be? This is a proposal to put into the zoning code what the existing interpretation is.
Period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause.
It's more than two sentences.
That's not why everybody's here.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're not changing anything.
Correct.
I don't have to get up.
Okay. By chance, does the audience have what we're looking at?
No.
No.
But John can put it up on screens. So that they know we're not pulling anything fast here.
Yes, this has been posted online on our website and available at the front counter.
Perfect. Thank you.
Your book on my counter, okay.
Yeah, basically, if I read through these, all I did was go to the section for the TS one, TS two, B one, and B two, and enter in the listing of uses permitted by right or by special use, the term, short-term rentals. It's that simple.
Which, correct, I read all that and went through that, but, and Laura was really good at laying that out.
What did you get, Warren?
So that way, people just don't think we're pushing something through, because we are not.
Correct.
At all. Okay.
And then if, if your recommendation is to council to move these amendments forward, they would, I think, be introducing it at their, probably their December four meeting. And then depending on whether it has to skip a meeting or not, at one of the next two meetings after the December four meeting, it would go for their, their final action. And then that final action, I think there's a certain amount of time following publishing or the vote that it goes into effect. Is that right, Laura?
Correct.
Twenty days.
Twenty days, under your charter.
Okay.
Now, what we are looking at this evening came from you, not from council, correct, sir?
Well, it was reviewed by council. I drafted it. I sent it to council. Council sent it back with revisions, and then that's what this is.
All right, so now I'm a smidgen confused, because I thought planning, this is working backwards compared to what I'm used to.
Wait, wait, when you say council, do you mean legal council or city council?
City council.
Oh, no, no, no.
You meant legal council.
Legal council.
There, okay. Now that makes more sense already.
Yeah.
I drafted how I interpreted doing the memo, sent it to legal council, legal council appropriately sent back that we needed the definition of short-term rentals, which was an obvious thing that we needed, and made one other small change, and that was it.
My apologies, Laura.
You misspelled the word, John.
Did I?
Two different ways of doing council.
There is. Okay, and I need some, no. I don't know. That's another kind. All righty. I can open a public hearing, but I, okay. Let's do it. Okay. We're gonna, at this time, we'll open public hearing. Hopefully y'all understood what just took place, that this is here just talking on stuff on paper, not doing anything else with short-term rentals. So I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing, kind of do what we did before. If anybody's got anything to say, please come up to the podium, tell us your name, say you don't like what's on paper, do like what's on paper, but it's still not, it's not changing anything that you think, yeah? Yeah?
I'm Bev Peters, and I live in Cadillac. I have done some investigation into like how many homes there are, or homesteaded and non-homesteaded, and then I was wondering how many residential, and then how many short-term rentals and long-term rentals. And maybe you already know this, but there's like 604 long-term rentals in Cadillac, and there was 14 identified short-term rentals. I talked to Matt Deverney, who's a Wexford County equalization appraiser, and he can identify 14. And he gave me the property numbers, and I looked those up, and of the 14, six of them do not live in Cadillac. They're either in another city or even another state. So, according to Joel Porterfield, there's 3,259 residential classes, or parcels. Of those, 2,355 have their principal residence exemption, and 904 do not. So, if you have 904 that do not, and 604 that are rentals, that leaves 300 homes on accountant four. So I asked Matt Deverney, I said, what, what is this? And he goes, probably second homes. So I was amazed. I thought it would be the opposite. I thought there'd be a lot more short-term rentals than there are, because there seems to be so many complaints, you know? But we have ordinances for noise, we have ordinances for parking, and I thought, hopefully someone can, with this coming up, that they can have someone enforce those ordinances for the places that have issues with the short-term rentals that are by their homes. So, and I think I said this when we were at the Water Works Building, or whatever it's called. I had checked with Michelle Hoytengas' office, and Airbnb actually pays the state of Michigan in 2021 $16,000, 16 million, sorry, $16 million in sales tax. That was in 2021. And I am with Evolve, and they pay, we pay sales tax, and Evolve is, I think, I don't know if it's the only one, but they give 5% to the Cadillac Visitors Bureau also. So it's just not, you know, there are other bonuses for having short-term rentals, you know, with the taxes and the Cadillac Visitors Bureau. And I have to say, we have a place on Lake Mitchell, and the people came on Tuesday, they were from North Carolina, and they loved the place because they could get their grandmother out of Whispering Pines and bring her there every day, so she could be with her children, her grandchildren, and her great-grandchildren. And I don't see that happening in a hotel or whatever. So I was, if anything else, that did it for me, you know, that that family could be together. Who knows? But we made Grandma happy.
Perfect. Thank you, Bev. John?
Yes. I'm John Sari. I live at 201 Iroquois, Cadillac. And I was a city planner here in Cadillac from 81 to 2006. We had lots of problems pop up along the way, satellite dishes, group homes, lack of housing in general, downtown parking, rental housing. We saw the development of resort-type rental units. We called them tourist homes. We put that right in the ordinance. We saw the problem of nuisances with parking and parties, et cetera. The city planning board, back then chaired by Tim Naggs for many years, felt the best method was using the special land use permit process. The special land use process requires a public hearing, inviting all the property owners within 300 feet, where concerns can be addressed with remedies to follow. Any violations of the conditions of a special use permit can be cause of revoking the special use permit. The problems arise from nuisance complaints. It can and should be addressed by the police department. The city is lacking housing. We should allow various housing types in the city, whether it's a Fonzie apartment above the garage, mother-in-law apartment. We've got all kinds of different housing needs, and we should address that and not say no to it.
Thank you, John. Everybody else happy in the audience? Yeah? Okay.
That's a loaded question.
Doctor?
Martin Bravick, 406 East Chapin. Question I have is, you know, you're presenting, looks like some amendments, and then they're gonna go to city council. You know, I would recommend that there be some enforcement provisions clearly laid out as part of this update, because you're really, you're really updating this, codifying this, and then city council's gonna look at it. But, you know, sort of echoing what Bev was mentioning, I think enforcement's a big question, and many people that I have talked to have expressed concerns with regard to enforcement. And that's all I have to say.
And if I'm correct, John, that will be part of what is coming.
That's correct.
Well, I would add, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
The city already has the power to enforce its zoning ordinance, and there are enforcement actions pending with respect to short-term rentals in the city.
Okay, but we're codifying, you know, as far as the short-term rentals, I think it would behoove. it, it would behoove, um, for this update to specifically mention that with regard to these updates, if that's possible. Um, I think that's a big question that, and concern people have had, that, that hasn't been enforced, that there haven't been enforcement with regard to various things, not, not just with, um, short-term rentals, but things like other stuff in, in residential neighborhoods. Um, so that's all I'm saying. I think that might be something that can be added to this before it's presented to city council.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, just for the record too, we did receive one letter from Linda Durant, uh, that was received just today, uh, in regard to short-term rentals in general. And I believe you all have that, uh,
I didn't have a chance to read it, but yes.
Was put on your desk.
Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Mark Kornacki. I live on Ranona Street. And I think we're missing point is residential, uh, short-term, not necessarily outside where the, uh, businesses, you know, work with the people. I've had incidents on our street where they put 20 kids in the house and partied all night, causing fights and everything else they had. They, they, uh, how I put it, they, uh, didn't check the people out. They're all college kids. And there was a bunch of cars and all night it went through. Kim lives right next door to that house and they couldn't sleep. They, and I think Dan McEwen called the police on them. And they told him to keep quiet. So it's not so much where they are is in their residential areas. People live there year-round and we don't need that anymore in there. And I noticed Durant is one is running a house right now for that. And it's illegal, but they're doing it. And there's a lot of people doing it. On the other side of the, uh, lake on 55 there, they have people complaining that cars are parked on their lawn, their boats are there. It's just, nobody wants it in a residential area.
I've been to all those meetings as well, Mark.
Yeah, you were there, yeah.
Yes, sir. That's the main reason, so I could hear what everybody had to say before it got here.
Yeah. Well, that's the reason I'm against it. Not so much where...
But that's not what we're talking about tonight.
It's not all, but it's part of it.
I don't think so. This, this just deals with putting this on paper, period. Period. It's been here. It just hasn't been recognized.
But is residential involved in it?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
No, sir.
Okay.
But I, we will be seeing you again.
Probably.
I know that. There will be a time that this is coming up, yes. Okay.
I'm gonna muller my way through something here.
Oh, you just needed to stretch.
My hips are.
I know it.
John, speaking of R1 and R2, you plan on keeping R1 and R2 in the code? Residential 1, residential 2?
Talking to me, but yet John's gonna get the answer.
I'm looking at John.
And/or council, so I'd...
I guess a yes or no answer.
If I may.
No, I'm asking you.
This is not appropriate.
No, it's not. Nope, 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 nope.
We'll see you at the next council meeting.
This is...
That's fine.
I didn't know it was inappropriate.
They night at 6 o'clock.
All this is just some verbiage on paper, Brian, that's all. We're not doing anything we shouldn't do right now. God, you were hiding. I couldn't even see you back there. I know it.
Um, I'm Andy Van Alst, 2005 Sunnyside Drive. Uh, you know, this is what we wanted, was the codification of the, the ordinance, uh, according to John's memo, which was, uh, uh, two years old, is, uh, I think it was October 15th. But I've seen in the paper where it's several years older, whatever. But anyways, it's only two years old. So in the last two years, we have to look at that and go, what has happened in the last two years since we knew it? We knew this two years ago and here we are codifying something that we knew two years ago. So we're, actually, Eric, what are we doing? We're not really doing anything. We're saying, we want you to do what you should be doing. That's, that's really it. So, uh, this is an opportunity to take a look at it. And the number one complaint from this whole process has been enforcement. And, um, you know, part of that, I think you go, how do we, how do you keep everybody happy? It's probably not gonna keep everybody happy. Just let's focus on me though. No, but if we, but, but I would, I would like to see some kind of group that could get together. And I've talked to Bob and Linda about how do we, you know, what, if this is gonna go forward, what needs to be in it and what needs not to be in it and try and be a part of the solution instead of just part of the problem all the time. Um, I don't think anybody has complained about any Airbnbs being in any of these locations, the TS1, the TS2, the B1 or the B2. I think there have been probably no cease and desist letters going to these people. Um, it's everything outside of that. That's the problem. And that's the enforcement. That's why, that's why we're here. We're not here to recognize that, gotta get this fixed. But we're not here to recognize that, um, you know, and I believe there's a place for Airbnbs. I mean, and so, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
This is Durant, letter of public comment.
Could we have a copy of that? Is that, is that public?
Sure, you got more of those out?
Or will it be in the minutes?
Yeah. It would be posted after the meeting. It just came in before the meeting, so there was not time to get it on the website.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have anything on their mind pertaining to this? Sorry.
Don't.
All open a can of worms. I know. I always get Joe. He's gonna, he can reach me. Okay. Okay. If there's no one else at this time, we will go ahead and close public hearing. Um, actually, I have a question for John since now I'm closing public hearing. I have a quick question, John, in the, um, principal permitted by TS1 Tourism. Um, the Sun and Snow Restaurant, Restaurant, Motel, they, and it's in the city, I'm, they rent rooms to people for a long time, right?
They've told us they do not.
Really? Wow. I sounded the same. Wow. Okay. Because it says for temporary lodging only and they're in that district and so I was curious.
If I...
Yes, please, Marcus.
If I, Mr. Chair, um, if there is concern that perhaps they're not being forthcoming, we can certainly look at investigating the types of use and, and how they may or may not be using it in accordance with our code. So...
Mr. Hall might have a lot of info.
Possibly.
Possible. Okay.
And, um, I'm also happy to try to address any questions planning commission may have. I know we received some public comment tonight regarding process and what may or may not be included regarding other zoning districts. Um, the only zoning districts that are a part of the action that city council is being asked to consider this evening are those that our development director mentioned were in his interpretation memo that were asking to be codified. Any other activity, items for consideration regarding this use in any other zone or any variance of this use, whether it's in the zones already listed or again in any other zone, wouldn't come back around until quite some time, probably at the earliest, if I had to guess, spring or summer, and that would be after a period of time, um, let me rephrase it, that would be after such time that we're through all of the zoning updates. And then when it comes back around, similar to this process, it would first come to the planning commission for consideration within a recommendation going forward to city council for then their consideration. And as a part of all of that, there will be, at, at a minimum, two public hearings, one at this level and then one at city council. There might be additional public forums. Who, who knows? But that, that's something that isn't even on the docket at this point, at this level or at the city council level to, to discuss. Just trying to clarify for everybody here at home, on TV and whatnot.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair, when you're ready.
Thank you.
I've got a motion for you whenever you're ready.
Yes.
Are you ready or?
Go.
I have a question I would like to ask. Actually, three questions. One to council. Just clarifying for the fifth time tonight, this changes nothing in the R1 district. This is simply...
Correct. This relates to the TS1, TS2, B1 and B2 zoning districts. It just puts into the zoning ordinance what was already in the official zoning interpretation.
Next question would probably be directed to John Wallace. Is there any known ownership in this district that has outwardly opposed having this added to what they're currently zoned that you are aware of?
Say that again.
Similar to R1, we have, we have several individuals that are, you know, adamantly opposed to this. Okay. We're adding this, we're now making this an option in these zoning districts, totally different than R1. Is there anybody that has been vocally, openly opposed to having this now added to their zoning ordinance that they're currently in?
Nobody that's approached me directly to tell me that. I mean, I can't speak to the people that opposed it at those meetings, what districts they were in, but nobody's come forward to me and said, I have a problem with you doing this in this district.
A good question?
Yeah. Okay. Joe?
I would just note that if the planning commission fails to act, unless we were to expressly exclude them, the city would operate under the development director's memo as it has previously existed, reflected and intended to be codified here.
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that the proposed changes to session 46-4, 46-456, 46-458, 46-372, 46-397, be approved by the planning commission and recommended for approval to the city council. Did I miss anything?
That was good.
Anybody second that motion? Ms. Host, please, Ms. Abigail.
Bosher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Bauman?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
And Filkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, you folks are welcome to hang out while we talk about some new business, but it won't be a big thing, but, or you can take this opportunity and tell us bye. Thank you, everyone.
Good to see you.
I'm good to do it from here if you're okay with that.
Will there be anybody left?
This will be an easy one. This is a candy bar.
What's going on?
This one?
Oh, yeah.
Well, there could be a big story afterwards. More news.
Just doesn't wanna hear what I have to say?
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. See you, Chris.
Have a good one.
I do. I'll lock the door my way out and then you can set the alarm. Okay.
All right.
I always lock the door because John's always here.
Please. Ready? Okay.
Are we ready?
Yes.
All right.
Staff ready?
Yeah.
We're ready.
Perfect.
All right. So the next is to discuss a lot split, property line adjustment at 429 Cobb Street. The owner of the property is Wexford County. This is the old jail site. Up on the screen you'll see the survey is attached with a couple of comments. Currently the property is zoned OS1 Office District, Office Service District. The lot meets the minimum required width, which is 50 feet. Wexford County wishes to transfer 100 feet from the 649.05 foot wide lot to create a new parcel. This parcel will continue to house the mobile medical response building, which is located on the southern part of the property there. Uh, the two new conforming, or two new lots would be conforming, still with the district. Because this is located in the G.A. Mitchell Platte of Northwest Quarter of Section 3, it is required to come before the planning commission for approval per our ordinance. Um, staff is in support of this property line adjustment or lot split. It will allow the owner to hopefully sell the Wexford County old jail site and allow the continued use by mobile medical response services to use their garages for the ambulances. The planning commission may approve, approve with conditions, or deny this request. Do you have any questions for me?
My limited knowledge here, we're not doing a lot line adjustment, we're doing a split.
A lot split, yes.
Two totally different things.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, can you throw the photo up, Eric, the GIS?
I think I have it included in the PowerPoint.
Like what we're looking at?
It's included in your packets, but I did not put it in the PowerPoint, sorry.
Okay. I was just curious where the line's gonna be, like where they quit mowing the grass or something. Cause I, I drove by it.
The swirl on the left, all the way to the left. And then I'll...
All the way down.
All the way down. It's like the last thing.
Wow.
There you go.
There you go, girl.
That is the property.
They just need to clean it up. They should've done this years ago. Agreed.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
The current administrator thought this was already done by the previous administrator and now they're in talks for selling the property and realized that the lot line adjustment or the lot split never took place. So...
That never happens. Come on. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the lot split as requested.
Wonderful. Seconded.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bunce. Bauman and Bunce.
Thank you. Filkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
Bauman?
Yes.
And Putman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business, none. Board member comments? Any board member comments? I always have one. Not to irritate Joe, really. It's not, but...
Joe hasn't eaten dinner. You're gonna...
Neither have I. Neither have I. I'm sorry.
He's got some anger here.
Yeah, exactly.
I haven't had dinner.
All right.
Uh, I thought the drone light show thing was awesome. There.
Great turnout.
Thousands of people would agree with you.
Oh, man, the park was...
I've never seen so much traffic in Cadillac.
I, I went up by the, uh, yeah, Masonic Building that could overlook everything and I sat up there.
Did you hear the music?
No. I just turned on the radio. I had music, so.
I was right underneath them. My neck hurt when it was over there.
I wondered that.
I thought it'd be a good idea to be like right there.
Where's my...
Actually, I had to...
I wanted to lay down. I saw some people laying on the ground and, but it was too cold.
Ah, it was. Brilliant.
We have not adjourned.
I know. Greg was offering to make one, so.
And it's always in order, so unless we move along. Communications, we already have. Public comment, they all left us. And, okay, Joe, go eat.
Aye.